Today's date is Thursday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the regular meeting of the Governing Board of the San Marcos Unified School District. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Member Chamberlain. The San Marcos Unified School District Board of Education meeting is a business meeting of the Board held in public. While we welcome and encourage public participation, the expected behavior is that this meeting will be conducted in an orderly fashion. Only the person recognized by the Board President may speak. While that member of the public is speaking, members of the audience must not yell or speak out, regardless of whether you agree or disagree. While public comment is in progress, if you speak out, you're out of order and will be asked to leave the meeting. As adults participating in a public meeting, we need to model civility to our children and students. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you in advance for helping us conduct this meeting respectfully. The San Marcos Unified School District is an innovative and collaborative community providing an unparalleled educational experience. Through an engaging and supportive environment, all of our students are challenged, inspired, and poised to excel. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
A second.
Moved by Member Carlson, second by Member Ahmad, to approve the agenda as presented. Student Board Representatives, please say your vote.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Report of actions taken in closed session. The Board met in closed session and discussed collective bargaining between SMUSD and CSEA. No action was taken. Next, the Board discussed collective bargaining between SMUSD and SMEA. No action was taken. The Board also met in conference with real property negotiator Erin Garcia. No action was taken. Last, the Board discussed matters pertaining to employee employment, transfer appointment, discipline dismissal, release, evaluation, and reassignment. No action was taken. Report by Student Board Representatives.
Okay, hi. I'm super excited to be back for one final time to report on my awesome school again. So I'm on the last slide. Hang on. No, 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 no worries. Okay, so happy May. All right, so we're super excited to celebrate our students with an upcoming ELAC ceremony on Monday, May twentieth at six P M. And an emergent bilingual ceremony on Wednesday, May twenty-second at ten A M. And we also had our spring assembly and I wanted to give a quick shout out to our ASB program for a great last assembly of the year. Students bonded over games, performances, activities, chants, and songs. And it was super fun and we always love our assemblies because they bring us together a lot and they have a lot of school spirit. We also had state testing. So ninety-five percent of our eleventh graders completed our testing. And we had a lot of collaboration from our history, math, and English departments to get it done on time. And the student disposition towards the exam was very positive, so we're very grateful for that as well. We also have AP tests in full swing. I have been taking a lot this week as well. We have twenty-seven different tests being given over the span of this week and next week. And we have thousands of students taking them. So this picture was taken today right before the AP Psych exam. That's when all the students are gathering and Mr. Ziegler gives his little spiel of no phones, no earbuds, all that. So huge thanks to Mr. Ziegler and all of our proctors of the exams. We obviously couldn't do it without them. We also had our student government elections on the week of April twenty-second to the twenty-fifth. And I'm super excited to announce to you that this is our next year's Student Board Representative. She's currently a junior, will be a senior. Her name is Sydney Cork. She's super sweet and I'm super excited to see what she will do, but also what all of our other position holders will do next year as well. She'll be here at the Year in Review. She couldn't come tonight because she has an AP test tomorrow and she needed to cram, but she'll be here at Year in Review. Yeah, she needed to get her rest. She's definitely not studying right now. But yes, so we also had our Bring Change to Mind Club collaborate with Love on a Leash and they brought out the service dogs. They're super cute. And it really just allowed the students to kind of de-stress and hang out with the really adorable puppies right before we're heading into AP tests and final season, which was super awesome. And they were, they were so cute, so fun. We also had, I brought this up last meeting, we had our last Knights United meeting of the year. So again, this is where we have two ASB representatives from each ASB class go in once a month. And our Equity and Diversity Director Chloe De La Loza, she creates a presentation to bring awareness to a certain cultural event that's happening that month and kind of teach people about it so that there's an awareness around our school and hopefully it trickles out through the ASB program. So this month she highlighted Ramadan and that was super cool to learn about because I didn't know very much about it and it was very interesting. Okay, we also had Senior Sunset on Wednesday, yesterday. It was really fun. All of our seniors came out. They drew on the, in the quad with chalk on their future plans, college, trade schools, jobs. It was so fun. Everyone wore college sweatshirts or anything like that. And it was so fun. We had games, food, activities. And it was a really great way to kind of bond as we're kind of going into the last little segment of our time here. All right, so we also had Unity Day last Friday. It was put on by our No Place for Hate Club, our Bring Change to Mind Club, and our Rainbow Club. And students were given the opportunity to tie dye at lunch. So the clubs put out a bunch of tables and anyone was welcome to come up and tie dye and it was super fun. And a really great, easy way to kind of de-stress and just do a fun little activity during your lunch break. Okay, we also had Knights Ball, which is a really cool thing we do. So it's a dance for our ASB students and our special education students. And it's designed with a lot of inclusive activity options. Like they had games and bubbles and dancing and a quiet room with like coloring. So that if anyone was overstimulated, they could go in there and there's a lot of different options just so that if there's any students who may not be able to attend those more wide school event options like prom because it might be a little too much for them, they always have this option, which is super fun. And we had a great turnout from both ASB and our special education program. So we also had our Empty Bowl fundraiser. So students were given a long lunch period and they could come out and buy a bowl made by one of our ceramic students who were hard at work for many months preparing. So they made really cool bowls, as you can see here. They all had complete freedom to make whatever they want. One of my favorite bowls was in the top, oh, the bottom left corner. That was made by a senior. Her name's Avery Morley. She's incredibly talented. That was an auction piece. We raised actually thirteen thousand dollars for filling empty bowls in our community. And so basically students came out, they bought the bowls ranging in price from fifteen to auction bowls, which were upwards of fifty dollars. And they got a lunch in exchange too. So they got to keep their bowl and then they got pasta and breadsticks to kind of like fill their bowl with. We also had our Day of Silence put on by a lot of our clubs. So students were given the opportunity to participate in a day of silence to show their support from marginalized groups and silenced voices. And so the clubs all designed some stickers. These are some examples. There were many more, but those were just ones I had pictures of. But so they were able to go in the morning, right break and grab a sticker and wear it all day. And they participated in a day of silence. You could have grabbed the sticker and not participated too. But it was really awesome and really cool to see all the students participating and supporting the causes that they cared about. We also had our FFA program, Visit Lacoste Meadows, which was super cool. They taught TK kids and got to propagate plants, meet animals, and try a bunch of foods that align with the farm. And so that was a really great opportunity and they got to kind of teach TKers about the importance of healthy living and healthy eating and how that kind of all balances out. We also had our Ballet Folclorico, sorry. They went to a Sees multicultural festival and got to perform there. And also at a Cinco de Mayo celebration at a local restaurant. And it was great to see all the talent that they have in that group. We also had our band program Have Acxiom, which is their kind of end of year finale show. It's always incredible way to wrap up the year and there's so many talented students and it's just so impressive to go and watch. So I highly recommend if you're ever looking for something to do at the end of next year. But yeah, so thank you guys so much for the opportunity to be here. I've really enjoyed my time with you guys. And this has been a great experience for me and I've genuinely learned so much. And I am so excited to kind of take what I've learned into my future and bring that with me. And again, I just want to thank you guys for this opportunity.
Give me one second. I just have to open my computer and bring this down a little bit. But hi, everybody. Thank you once again for having me. I'm just gonna jump right into it. But we're gonna start off with connection, belonging things, fun things that we've been doing on campus. Starting with our club spotlight, we have Philippines Appreciation Club. PAC is a great community where they talk about the language, the culture, and host fun activities related to the culture. And they also talk about music, offer a safe space to share more about one another, and also share food, as you can see on the left picture. We had our last pep rally of the year as well. Again, a huge thanks to ASB and the ASB leadership. We are very proud of just the fact that we, we try to find a way for every student that okay, let me backtrack a little bit. We're proud that our ASB hosts a lot of different types of students. And we try to find paths for them to thrive. And in return, we get their dedication to plan great events like this. So huge shout out to ASB, the leadership, and Mrs. O'Neil. At our pep rally, we re-rolled the prom theme and the location, which will be on June first. We also had Clash of Classes and seniors won the same day. They actually won. It wasn't like we didn't cheat or anything. But it was so great getting so much class participation from all of the classes. We also had lunch events like student karaoke and book drives recently. Moving on to my Portrait of a Graduate section. A couple of avid updates are, one of our avid seniors, Robert Davis, was honored as a Rising Star at the April Award Ceremony at CSUSM. We're very, very proud of him. And another one of our seniors, Laxa Montez, has committed to attend Yale University in the fall and was offered a full ride scholarship. She's also the recipient of the Cindy Bishop Scholarship through the Avid Center. A couple of other updates. There's a lot of text, but I promise it's not as much. A couple of other updates that for the third year in a row, a hundred percent of our avid seniors have been accepted to at least one four-year university. And the avid program had a record number of applicants for the next year. We had a hundred and seventy-two students who applied to be in avid. We're not currently enrolled in the middle schools, which is really great. Also, very, very excitingly, the Mission Hills High School Avid Site team won ten thousand dollars for the two thousand and twenty-four Teacher Advocacy Award. And Mission Hills is the only high school in the state to win the award this year. So we are very proud for our Avid department. And it's great that they got the money as well. A couple of updates from our Superintendent's Advisory Council. We talked about what your ideal school looks like and transitioning into the future. Thinking about how what we've discussed can translate into action. And one of our activities there was drafting, drafting action plans slash solutions. A couple ideas that people brought up were a principal advisory council and individual departments. So students and teachers can kind of communicate the lessons that they like to see, smaller class sizes. And we talked about like Twin Oaks and we learned that like just the overall culture and the intimacy of Twin Oaks allows like teachers and students to both open up. So being able to understand like, you know, what's going right there that we can use to help fix our bigger campuses as well. Also, I wanted to mention for like our equity team, we have the next gen. Passing the mantle to, from left to right, Celine Van Dong, Trinity Moon, and Jorge Galvan. I'm so beyond confident in all of these three. They're actually all sophomores, but they are so intentional with their voices. Wait, not but, and they are so intentional with their voices and they use their lived experiences while also connecting with the student body and understanding other perspectives to communicate and co-create change for us. I'm a fan of them. I look up to them. I admire them so much. So I'm very excited to see all the incredible work that they will continue and initiate next year. Our seniors in the Special Education Department are getting ready to graduate. So next week they are visiting the Adult Transition Program where most of them will attend after high school. And we also hold a small sped graduation in the library each year to celebrate their accomplishments. And I have it right here as well. It's Monday, June third, from eleven to twelve in the Mission Hills Library, and there are no tickets needed. And for my staff spotlight today, this is Ms. Barnes. She teaches moderate to severe special education. And she loves getting to watch her students grow in their independence. She loves her job because she gets to walk alongside them and teach them how to access their community, interact with their peers, and grow their independent skills. They get to take the city bus to different stores and restaurants, work in the student store, and try new recipes in their kitchen. A couple really exciting updates from OneTV. So directing change is actually a film contest where students send in sixty-second films to spread awareness about suicide prevention and ending the silence associated with mental illness. So Ethan Carlos and Dante won third place on their short Harpo, which is on the right. And then Zahid and Savannah won for their film Reach Out, won second place. And they're actually now advancing statewide and were also nominees for People's Choice, which is very exciting. For Districts Make the Difference, it's a video contest where students highlight the way special districts make the difference in their local communities. And our editor in chief is advancing to the National High School Student Video Contest for Districts Make the Difference. This is my student spotlight, Jitsiri. She's not in ASB, but she often does help out and gets involved with our events. She's also in our Folclorico Club. She says that she has a great passion for dancing and really likes science classes. She's also motivated, she says, by living every day of life. Her purpose is to learn as much as possible and be better every day to fulfill her two dream jobs. Jitsiri is amazing. As for a couple of future events, I recommend that you mark on your calendars because they are very exciting. Our Mission Hills Dance Team is presenting their Spring Showcase tomorrow and Saturday. Highly recommend checking it out. Our Kaleidoscope Festival is coming up. It's actually a VAPA-wide festival. So it's a week-long event, live performances, art gallery from all students, and interactive opportunities. And there's also a Saturday Arts Market on the twenty-fifth to close the week. And I highly recommend going to the Saturday Arts Market as well because there will be a ton of performances and cool pieces to see. Also, Folclorico Club will be presenting their End of the Year Showcase on Friday, May seventeenth at six P M. And I cannot recommend going to the showcase enough because it truly is one of the highlights of the year. So I highly, highly recommend marking that in your calendars. So that concludes all of my updates for school and I just wanted to talk about like future plans as we exit out. First of all, I wanted to thank all of these people on the screen. Yeah, I just, I would not be the same person I am if not for all of the patience and support that I got from every single one of these people. So I am very, very grateful. And of course, my parents, my mom is watching online, like obviously my parents and my family. But yeah. And with that also, a special thanks to all of you. Very, very grateful for this opportunity. I feel like I've been able to find my voice and I appreciate you sharing agency so that I can do that. And more than my voice, like also finding my purpose and shaping my future plans, which brings me to what I want to do in my future. I want to go into cognitive science, but I also want to do public policy. I really, Ash's experience, I really do want to go into education policy. And yeah, I'm hoping to be able to figure out how those two fields are going to connect. I'm still trying to figure out what I want to do. But those are the two fields. And just as for where I'm hoping to do it, I'm still deciding between Wellesley and Berkeley, but ultimately just a four-year university. But with that, thank you once again. This is a picture from our first board meeting. But thank you once again. I really appreciate this.
You guys, we learned so much from you guys. And I can honestly say, I know sitting up here, we sometimes aspire to be like you guys. So thank you for your time because I know it's a big time commitment and effort to coming here and presenting to us and teaching us. So thank you and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
What that bring, oh, sorry, go ahead. All right, four point six recognition of our two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four Student Board Representatives, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Yes, that's our perfect segue. Sarah, thank you. So we wanted to thank you publicly for the amazing work that you guys have done. Kaylin, you and I have known each other. We're working together this year. You joined the Board. It's great. She jumped right into the student advisory. My superintendent advisory helped lead those, those monthly meetings. You're, you've been awesome and you've been great. And we've really appreciated your, your presentations here and hearing from you and all of your leadership at the school. And we're gonna miss you. Nikita, I'm, yes, we should, we should clap for her. That's Nikita. That's Nikita. Don't start talking about me until we clap for Kaylin. Nikita, we've known each other for like three years now. I first met Nikita online on Zoom when we were doing our Portrait of a Graduate. When we were developing our Portrait of a Graduate, those of you who were on those calls, you remember that there were moments when the facilitator would call on us for comments and they would call on the students and Nikita would talk and everybody out there, we're muting there, we're muting our mics. Nobody wants to talk after Nikita talked. So eloquent and so passionate. And we had, I had you at the Welcome Back one year up on the stage in front of everybody. You're an amazing kid. You said, you just, just said right now that you've learned to find your, but I think you've had your voice. Maybe you'd, maybe you refined it a little bit, but you were, you were born with a, with a, a voice, an important voice and a powerful voice. So we wish you guys the very best of luck. And to Sarah's point, when you two are ruling the world, don't forget the little people, okay, who helped you get there because we're very, very proud of you. So we have a small recognition for each of you. And then I know the Board would probably like to make some comments as well.
I, we just really could not be prouder of you, truly. I am, that's all.
I'm absolutely speechless, but both of you will make proud Grizzly and a proud Knight. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Nikita, it was so wonderful to meet you three years ago and to see you just not find your voice, but really refine it. And, and you, I feel like you have such amazing presence and clarity when you speak and and Wellesley and Berkeley, not too shabby. Those are amazing colleges. I personally know you will be doing some fabulous things in your career, in your life. And hopefully you'll be our next state superintendent. I can see that in your future. I'm part Walter Mercado. And so I can see a little bit of the future and I see that in your future. Kaylin, you, you're gonna do amazing things in the world. Where are you going to college?
Like I said earlier, I'm currently committed to San Diego State, but if I get enough scholarships over the summer, I'm going to go to Berkeley.
I went to San Diego State. It's a great school. I teach there now. And Berkeley is a great school as well too. So you have options. You know, I just really want you both to continue to be connected to San Marcos. Whatever you do, come back and visit. But Kaylin, I've enjoyed your presentations. I feel so connected to San Marcos Middle School because of you. And you really have a pulse on that campus and you really have highlighted the inclusiveness and have spotlighted so many different various things over this year. So thank you. And I look forward to meeting the new Nikita and the new Kaylin at the next meeting. So please do come back and visit and thank you for your service to our community. We greatly appreciate everything you've done. So thank you. Let's give them another applause. We're gonna take a quick picture. Five point O Communication Session. If you wish to address the Board, you may fill out a request form located in the alcove to the left of the double doors as you enter the boardroom. Please complete a white speaker form if the item you wish to speak on is on the agenda and a blue speaker form if the item you wish to speak about is not on the agenda. Please give it to Suzie. In accordance with Board Policy ninety-three twenty-three, public comments will be limited to twenty minutes per topic. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak, except for our union representatives who have five minutes. Per the Brown Act, members of the Board are very limited in their ability to respond to statements or questions made during public comment. Unless an item has been placed on the published agenda, there shall be no deliberation or action taken. The Board may, one, acknowledge receipt of information, report, and comment. Two, refer to staff for further study. Or three, refer the matter to the next agenda. A recording is made of all open sessions of the Governing Board. Again, on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you in advance for helping us conduct this meeting respectfully. Suzie, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Michelle Fleener.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Johnson wasn't kidding. I'm, I'm bummed I have to speak after these two. But I am here today as a concerned parent of a Woodland Park middle schooler. Last month, my son was unfortunately the victim of a life-changing incident that happened at school. A classmate secretly videotaped him during school, during class, doing something innocent, and then sent it to several friends. From there, the video was altered and posted on TikTok. The video falsely portrayed my son doing something sexual in nature. And along with the video itself, the TikTok short included my son's yearbook photo and his full name. So it was undeniably him. The video reached over a thousand views. And eventually students from other schools in the district commented on it. So he didn't feel safe when he went to football practice, basketball practice, or school. He missed several days of both. He experienced physical symptoms, headaches, stomach aches, nausea. He didn't sleep. He didn't eat. He was traumatized. We discussed homeschooling at that point. It's a huge burden for a student to carry, especially a sixth grader. Luckily, my son is resilient and with the support of the staff and his friends, he is back at school. But I do worry that this incident has caused him enough trauma and could continue to haunt him. Victims across the country who have had this cyberbullying happen to them have committed suicide at times. So this is serious. And I am in constant fear every day that he could be pushed to his limit as a direct result of this incident. And as a parent, I feel powerless to help him. But the one thing I can do is come here tonight and ask you to please consider a tighter smartphone policy in the San Marcos schools. Now, I realize there are protections in place for students to have a phone for emergency reasons. But in my opinion, that is the only reason to have a phone at school. I believe students should have to keep their smartphone turned off and turned into a designated location in the classroom during class. Unfortunately, incidents like this one are not uncommon in the classroom. It happens all the time. incidents like this one are not uncommon in the classroom. It happens all the time. Most students are not mature enough, in my opinion, to use cell phones responsibly and they don't understand the implications of posting videos and photos online. Aside from that, smartphones distract students from learning, as teachers well know. As it stands now, the district policy is a bit vague and clearly the responsive, I'm sorry, the responsible use policy is not really effective enough. At each school site, individual teachers are the ones left to interpret the guidelines. Some teachers allow them, some don't. Some are better at monitoring the use than others. So, I propose to just take this off teachers' plates. They don't need to be monitoring phones. They need to be focused on teaching. They don't need the competition with the smartphones and policing their use. So, what we need is a hard rule that is not left to interpretation. No smartphones allowed in class. I appreciate you being proactive so this doesn't happen to another person's child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fleener, I just wanted to let you know that I have requested a special meeting about our smartphone policy and I know Dr. Zuccio and Dr. Johnson are working on getting that on our calendar. This is something that the entire board is, has, it's on our radar. Very sorry. I don't know if anyone from the district has reached out specifically to talk to you about the incident with your son, but I think someone will reach out to you about that incident. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I'll just say from the staff side, yeah, we've been working on this. We've been having these very discussions as a staff.
6.0, report by the superintendent.
Hey, thank you. It is May and there's a lot going on right now. So, I'm gonna start with one timely matter that's a little somber and then I'm gonna move on. It's just the one slide. It's a somber one. The Governor's May Revision is due out next week. So, we don't have hard facts now, but we will very soon. The board is aware that the state is experiencing a pretty big deficit right now for next year and the really only conversations that are happening up in Sacramento now are how big is that billion number? How many billions is it? So, we're waiting to hear. This graph here is from the Legislative Analyst Office from a few months ago. So, these numbers have been shifting and changing, but like I said, it's not looking good. So, we're preparing for that. Just a couple of things to know additionally that are kind of compounding the challenge for us going forward. The COLA that is being discussed right now is about 1.07 and we are waiting to see if that's fully funded, if it's funded at some other level. We don't know yet. I know we've talked about this before, but just kind of general rule of thumb, the district's expenses go up by about 4% every year just on the natural as staff moves up step and column and electricity and gas and all those other things rise in cost. So, 4% is about what we need to just to kind of maintain. So, anything less than that is gonna mean some challenges for us. Another thing that's interesting that's important to note is that we actually have a large graduating class this year. A lot of 12th graders leaving us, 11th, 10th, 9th, they all get kind of smaller and we have a smaller TKK class projected to enter. So, we'll continue to monitor that, but that's gonna be smaller percentages multiplied times fewer students compounds that challenge for us. So, we will see. Our staff is right now in full-blown budget development mode. The budgets come due next month and we're already beginning to plan and kind of look at our budgets and see where we might need to be tightening up, but that'll all come in the fall. Okay, that's the only somber note. Everything else is positive from here on out because it is a very positive time of year. I'll start with School Principals Day. That was May 1st and so we want to acknowledge and recognize our amazing site administrators who do incredible work every single day to support their kids, their teachers, their families. These guys are working hard. They had their meeting, their monthly meeting this morning and I think they're tired but excited for the end of the year and there's lots of fun events going on. So, we couldn't do our work without them. They're providing leadership right where the real work of our district is happening. So, we want to acknowledge our principals. It is also Teacher Appreciation Week this week. As a matter of fact, the National Teacher Appreciation Day was two days ago, Tuesday. So, we also want to acknowledge our amazing teachers. We have incredible teachers in this district and every single school site, they're working hard. Kids are changing. Kids are not the same as they used to be and our teachers do an amazing job accepting every single one of them with whatever differences they have in passions and interests and abilities and desires and challenges and all that. Our teachers do an amazing job. So, happy Teacher Appreciation Day and Appreciation Week. Not to leave out the school nurses, it's also School Nurses Day yesterday. Today's the 9th, right? Okay, thank you. I'm kind of day-to-day these days. Yesterday was School Nurses Day. So, you know, we have a team of RNs in the district who do incredible support for our kids with medications, insulin, all those kinds of pieces. We heard earlier, there was a video that I showed earlier this year from one of our health aides, Health Tech. What's the actual formal job description? Job title? Health aide, thank you. The health aide. So, you know that they do more than just administer medications and put Band-Aids on. They do all that and more and they're shoulder to cry on and an encouraging word when it's needed to. So, happy School Nurses Day to our school nurses. Also, this month was School Lunch Hero Day and I just wanted to pause for a second. These are classified employees who do amazing work with our kids, obviously, every single day. I don't know what your recollections are of cafeterias when you were a kid. Oh, what I remember, when I used to go through the cafeteria was a lady with a hairnet scooping all of our stuff out of, everything was on an ice cream scoop. It was an ice cream scoop of potatoes. It was an ice cream scoop of mystery meat. It was an ice cream scoop of green beans. It was all in ice cream scoops and it was, I don't know, the vibe in there was just like, give me my lunch and let me get out of here. Our school nurse, our school nurses, our school lunch staff are amazing. If you ever go to one of our schools while lunch is being served, these guys not only have service with a smile and they're moving those kids through there, but they also notice when a kid's having a bad day and even though they only have four seconds to say it while they're going through, they're giving them a little encouraging word. They're giving a little thumbs up. Hey, it's gonna be a great afternoon, whatever. They're definitely part of our team. Just same way, we don't have bus drivers in here today, but same way the bus drivers are the first adult that many of our kids see in the day and they're giving them that smiling face and setting them off on the right foot. Our school lunch staff does the same thing. So, I want to acknowledge them and thank them for their hard work. And on that note, later on this month is Classified School Employee Week. So, you see here photos from last year's Job Shadow Day. Last year, CSEA, our local CSEA chapter had support from state CSEA to put this on. We decided we wanted to do it, Ron and the team and all of us together decided we wanted to do it again this year. We'll see how this year goes and if I have my, it is, what is the day of our shadowing day? 21st and 22nd, is that what you just asked? Yes, we're gonna get you guys an invite, for sure. We're gonna see, we're gonna see how it go. I wanna drive the Zamboni, the wax, the wax, floor waxing Zamboni thing. We'll see how this one goes, but I told Ron, if I had a vote, I think we should just do this every year. I think it's a lot of fun and so we're looking forward to that. And not to leave anybody out, last but not least, it is School Communicators Day tomorrow, the May 10th. So, we want to honor Amy in that. This little graph here came off the National School Public Relations Association website. It's how you, how most PIOs spend their time. So, you see crisis communication, external communication, social media, all the way down. I asked Amy about this and she said, some of these bars down below, the strategic communications planning, the marketing, those for her are a little bit higher, but you can just see the kinds of things that Amy and her colleagues spend their time on. I also want to just highlight that blue bar in the middle, the media relations. I don't know that the board is aware. We get media requests and media inquiries every month. Not only, you know, everything from, hey, I'm running a story on X thing and I need your, I need some info from your school district to folks who are looking for hits and clicks and looking for something steamy that they can find out from us. So, Amy receives a lot of those, but Amy also has relationships with all of our local people, like on first name basis and they're all on each other's cell phones and she's proactively reaching out and that's how we were able to get, like for example, the first day of school, we had two different news channels here. You recall that? One at Mission, one at San Marcos High and they're, Amy's constantly getting them out. So, that, those relationships are a really important part of her job. So, congratulations and to Amy and thank you for all the work that you do. One other event that happened actually just yesterday, we had our final PAC meeting of the year. PAC is our Parent Advisory Committee. Those are our PTO leaders. I love that meeting. That's a really, really amazing group. They're gonna be here on the 23rd for our year in annual Year in Review meeting. We invited them because I want them to have some time in front of the board so we can acknowledge them. These are folks who, they're PTO leaders. They're, it's all volunteer. They do so much work for us. Yesterday, Nikki and Christine shared with them our CTE pathways. We had a really good hour and a half long conversation about all that. Our parents are very, very supportive. And then we got talking about some, you know, from the parent perspective, some of the rough spots that we have to work out. What do I do when my kid wants to load up their schedule with all the AP classes and they don't have room for these? Or they do athletics after school. So, it was really a good, healthy give and take and I think our parents are very much in favor of and supportive of these future-ready efforts. So, that was a lot of fun. Also this week, I attended the Carlsbad City Schools meeting. So, this is an interesting one. The city of Carlsbad is unique in that there are four school districts that have schools within the city boundaries of Carlsbad. Carlsbad Unified, of course, is the big one and then there is Encinitas, San de Quito, and then we have two schools within the Carlsbad City boundary. So, once, I think maybe once or twice a year, we go and it's a subcommittee of the city council and we all, we just give updates. I was able to give an update this week on our e-bike safety efforts that we're coordinating with the city of San Marcos. That's been very tight. We had that meeting this week, I believe, with Michelle, the city manager. We have a very close relationship with her. I was able to share about our home-to-school transportation. All four, I believe all four superintendents talked about facilities' needs in their districts. That's a thing that all of us are facing and then our CTE efforts was another one that I was able to highlight. Okay. Closer to home, Mayor Rebecca Jones is going to be hosting her sixth annual State of Your Community event. That's on May 21st. She always graciously gives me a period to kind of do the intro. So, I share some slides and some updates about the school district and then she gives her annual, her State of the Community address. So, that'll be on May 21st at 4:00 over on their side of the highway and that's always a fun time for us to highlight the various things that are happening in our respective spheres. And then finally, our big final year-end event is coming up on the 23rd and this is super, super, super exciting. It's our third one that we're doing this year. It's our Year in Review. You guys know what it is. It's always a time where we get to celebrate everybody. It's all the positives. I will tell you, I know that Dr. Ioana, everybody else but Dr. Ioana in particular loves the jazz band. We've had them out here a couple of years in a row. We're gonna give them a break this time so they can go to the other event. This year, out in front as people are arriving, we're gonna have animals from the farm, from the, so a little bit of a petting zoo. So, bring your kids. Come on now. It's gonna be a lot of fun. So, yeah, we'll have them and then all of our staff will be here to highlight the amazing work that they're doing. So, I hope everybody can be there for that. That's a lot of fun. And then to close out, we have a shortened version of my regular video. If you want to watch the whole one, you gotta go online and you gotta see it, but I did want to highlight our superintendent spotlight for this month. And I just want to say, I had to say this to Amy. I'm like, how do you get the screenshot for this with the goofiest look on my face? Look at, look at Brittany. She's like so fresh and beautiful and you got me going, huh. So, anyway, so I'll just say.
I'm not sure if that's hard.
Quin Oaks High School with another one of our amazing classified employees. So, tell us your name and what you do.
My name is Brittany Gibbs and I'm a health aide and the asset coordinator.
Okay, so tell us like what are the typical day for you? Is there, is there a typical?
Yeah, so the typical day is I'm in the health office, of course. So, I'm there in the morning time and in the afternoon, I do the asset coordinator.
All right, so tell me more about this assets program. It's like a required thing the kids have to do or what is?
No, it's an after-school enrichment program. They do not have to be here. They sign in. They can work on credits through it and we're just really building those bonds with them. We take them on field trips.
Nice.
We just recently went to Bates Nut Farm.
Okay.
And it was just so special to me because I had a couple of students come to me and say, hey, you know, I've never been to a pumpkin patch.
Wow.
So, we're that first opportunity for them. We don't know what life is like at home, but being able to offer that for them is amazing.
What kind of clubs do they have?
So, we have weight training. We have Sawmill Barbecue. So, that's like wood shop.
Say that again.
Sawmill Barbecue.
Barbecue? Okay, tell me more.
That's a class they love because in that class.
I don't even know what it is. I already love it. If you have me a barbecue.
So, sometimes they do wood chop and then sometimes they barbecue.
Wow. So, it's, okay, interesting. Tell me about the barbecue. How do they do that?
Well, first they, so they set up the barbecue grill and then they pick whatever they want. So, sometimes they'll do bacon wrapped hot dogs.
Wow.
Sometimes they cook the sada, so.
Okay, okay. Why is it important to have these pubs for the kids after school?
I think because it gives them opportunities that maybe they don't get. We don't know their home life, but offering these extra curricular activities and then also a lot of students at the safe place for them.
Yeah, so they have a personal connection with you.
They do.
How'd that happen?
Throughout the years of doing the campus supervision, I built a connection outside with them.
Yeah.
And so, that bond has created, you know, a safe place and an open environment for them to come back to.
How many kids you have coming?
So, on a daily, we have maybe 30, 35 kids.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, that's 35 kids who could be like, school's out, I'm out, right? But they're staying for this. That tells you that they see a big value in it too.
Yes, and a lot of them stay for homework club.
Really?
Yeah. So, it's nice for them to stay for that homework club because they get the additional help.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'll thank you for everything you do. I mean, you know, I often say that the principals on our school sites are all, they're well-known. Teachers are very, you know, much interacting with our families and stuff, but there's other people like you who are kind of a little more behind the scenes, although I'm learning now that you're very much in part of the whole thing, right?
Yeah.
So, thank you very much. We couldn't do this without you.
Yes.
It's been fun to talk to you.
Yeah.
That's it for today. Thank you for joining me and we'll see you next time for the next superintendent's spotlight.
Go.
Thank you. Our risk manager knows about the barbecue, right? She's like she does now. I didn't even think of that before. You do know. Okay, it's all, it's all good. Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry. Things not to say, things not to say on a public board meeting. Any questions from the board? We'll just move right along. Yeah, okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Who does not love a barbecue? 7.0, Presentations. 7.1, Emergent Bilingual Master Plan and Dual Mersion. Patricia Carrillo and Angelica Bargansu.
Thank you. Angelica's gonna join me momentarily, but I'm gonna start. I have it all up here, but I took notes because I don't want to forget any details. So, thank you, Dr. Johnson, board members, executive cabinet, students, community partners. Thank you for your attention tonight. Hang on. Gotta clean my glasses. Okay. I am so proud and happy to talk to all of you tonight because I have completed the 2024 Emergent Bilingual Master Plan. As you can see, it's pages and pages. I know you have it in your hands, so you have access to it. It's 53 pages to be exact with lots of links and information on everything our emergent bilingual program offers. My hope is that after you approve it, we'll get it translated to Spanish and it will go on our district website. So, everybody has access to all of the wonderful work we do with our kids. Tonight, I'm gonna go over the Emergent Bilingual Master Plan, but I'm gonna make it fun and colorful and just show you our highlights of what we've done recently to revise and update our master plan. If I went through this whole program, it would be lengthy and boring. So, this will be kind of fun for you. Now, you might be saying to yourself, Patricia, what has prepared you to write this emergent master plan for our bilingual students? Let me tell you. I have had lots of time to perfect this skill. I had eight years of education, a BA and an MA at SDSU. I had curriculum instruction for my masters and then I received a bilingual teaching credential and administrative credential as well. This is my 38th year in SMUSD. I had one year of bilingual student teaching at SME, the old SME. 11 years as a bilingual teacher at SME Paloma and Woodland Park Middle School. And then I became a TOSA at Woodland Park Middle School where I worked with our community members to support our emergent bilingual students and connect them to reading to bring up their reading literacy skills. I had 21 years as a site administrator. I liked the older kids. So, when Woodland Park Middle School became a 6, 7, and 8 school, I moved over there and worked with them as a site administrator. And then Kevin Holt pulled me to Sims. So, I went to Sims. And then four years ago, I came to our district office and now I am proud to say I support the K-12 emergent. And now I am proud to say I support the K twelve emergent bilinguals. But I think most importantly, what I want to share with you tonight is I don't know if you can read the fine print, but in nineteen ninety, that's thirty-four years ago, I wrote for my master's thesis, an ideal bilingual program. You see, my maiden name is there, Patricia Staples. So I have been doing this work for many, many, many years. And I love the work. So I'm gonna share with you everything we've done. So when I first came to the district office, Dr. Campbell said, Patricia, what do you think we need to have in our emergent bilingual master plan? And I said, Tiffany, there's four things every emergent bilingual plan should have. I said, first of all, we need to have systems of support for our students, systems intact that work, are cohesive and understanding. We also need programs and practices in place that support quality instruction. We need parent involvement. I'm big on parent involvement because parents need to know what their kids are doing, how they're doing and how well they're doing in areas where they need extra support. And we need, need to continuously analyze what we're doing so that we can perfect what we're doing. Well, guess what? I'm gonna share something with you. I chat GPTed. I relied on the county resources and the federal information. And look what a quality emergent bilingual master plan has. Coherent, sustainable systems, equity driven, driven processes, evidence-based programs and practices, family, community engagement and support and accountability. That's it. So what I want to do is tell you first a little bit about our student population. Here's our current enrollment as of Monday. This is very up to date. We have a hundred percent total students, nineteen thousand seven hundred eight. We have a little over eleven, eleven point five emergent bilinguals, K twelve, two thousand two hundred sixty. And we have a little over fifteen percent RFEP. These are recently reclassified students. I highlight RFEPs because it takes five to seven years to learn a language. And even after students are reclassified, they're still perfecting their academic reading, writing, speaking, listening skills. So we have to continually support them, even though they're recently reclassified. So as you can see, one out of every four students in our district are students whose primary language is not English. Did you know that? Okay, so what I did was I took important sources and I analyzed those sources, the California English Learning Roadmap from the state, the local control and accountability plan, which we recently revised, our own strategic promise and portrait of a graduate. I combined all of that information and aligned our systems and practices to that data. Okay, at the start of every school year, I make it a point to meet with all the site administrators for a couple of hours. And we go over the expectations of what our kids need and deserve. And I take the master plan, I take the California English Learning Roadmap, I take the LCAP, I combine them, and I share with them three main goals that I want them to focus on. And then I go into how we're going to do that. The first goal is to maintain high quality instruction. That includes designated integrated ELD. Monitor, assess, and communicate student achievement data. Huge. Kids need to know how to play the game if they're gonna win the game of school. And embrace and communicate and welcome our families. So we talk about how we're going to make those happen at the school site. So what I want to do now is talk to you about the minute a a parent enrolls a child in our school district to the time they graduate from high school. These are all the steps and systems we've put in place to support our kids. Here's a little visual, visual for you. So I'm gonna talk to you about the home language survey, LPAC, curriculum reclassification, student data talks, D-LAC, D-LAC, reclassification ceremony, and then the pathways and the seal. Very quickly, but I just want to highlight these because I find when I talk to people about this, a lot of people do not know what emergent bilinguals need to do and the pathways they need to take to reach that seal of biliteracy, which is the ultimate goal. So the first thing we did is we changed the label that we have for these kids. Instead of them call, instead of us calling them English learners, we now call them emergent bilinguals. This is a much more asset oriented term because our goal is to encourage multilingualism, not to say that these kids are learning English. And this is evidenced in our synergy plan, our terminology. And when we talk about these kids, we call, we don't call them ELs anymore. We call them EDs. And the state and the county are catching up to us. Now, the home language survey is a survey that whenever you enroll a student in any school in the United States, parents are required to complete the home language survey. And it can be a little tricky because that home language survey is embedded in all the other district documents. And if it's not filled out accurately, kids may not get the help they need. Or maybe they don't need that extra support, but because of the responses the parent gave, the student is considered an emergent bilingual student until they officially reclassify. And that can be hard for families. So what we've done is we've provided information on this home language survey so that when parents fill this out, hopefully they read this information and they understand what each response means and what's going to happen based on the student responses. And I'm very thrilled that our district has employed Raquel Hernandez. She's a former D-LAC parent, but she now makes it a point based on parent responses that we call every single parent that has a response other than English and explains the purpose of the survey. What's gonna happen if there's a, if there's a um after this parent has chosen a response besides English, the process of the student receiving the LPAC exam, what the LPAC exam is going to entail and show us, and then what's gonna happen after that. So she's very thorough. And she has done an excellent job of informing our parents about this. Thank you, Raquel. So then the parents get, after the student is administered the initial LPAC, the parents get thorough results. And this has been refined. It's very small, but it is in this document. It's been refined and it explains the score, what the score means, what's going to happen to the student regarding the support we're gonna provide for the student. And it also talks about how the child can reclassify, the steps they need to go through. It talks about the programs we offer in our district and who to contact if they have any questions. And we still get calls, but it's very beneficial. Tom, I want to make sure I hit the right one. Is it this one? No? Here it is. Okay.
You got it.
Thank you. So that's the initial LPAC. And then once a student is designated as emergent bilingual, they continue taking a summative LPAC year after year after year. I'm gonna talk about that in just a minute. But another system that we've, we've refined is that any emergent bilingual student, no matter what level, they get an annual parent notification letter informing parents and students what level the student's at, how they're progressing towards reclassification, um and once again, programs that we offer within our district. Another piece of information that parents and students receive, and this is just a visual so you can understand. Emergent bilinguals are leveled one through four. A one is a newcomer or a student who's just learning English, one and two. Then they move into expanding where they're, they can communicate and they can write, okay, they're just don't have that academic structure down. They're called expanding. And then the bridging is the three, four level where they're almost ready to be re-designated, reclassified. That's the, I'm sorry, those are the labels of the emergent bilingual. Or perhaps the student takes that LPAC test and they test really well in English. They're determined initial fluent English proficient. Or there was confusion with some of the responses and they're determined English only. They probably shouldn't have been administered that test. But this is a tricky system that we're continuously refining, but hopefully it's a little more clear now. Another uh practice that we've really worked on this year is providing appropriate supplemental materials for our kids. Imagine a newcomer coming to us from another country needs completely different academic support than someone who's been in our system for many, many years, who needs more academic rigorous structure that's equitable to the grade level English language art standards. In addition, we want the students' materials to be grade level appropriate. You may have a newcomer coming to us who's a tenth grader. We don't want to give him an elementary school book. So we've really put a lot of time and support into gathering supplemental materials that support our students at all levels, all grades. I'm very happy about that this year. So after four to six years approximately of quality instruction, we hope that our emergent bilingual students are ready to become English proficient, which me, which means they can, they have, they successfully complete the reclassification process. So a document has been created such as this, that every single person has access to, teachers, parents, administrators, students. And it defines the reclassification criteria. This is required in the state of California. Um it talks about the LPAC score of a four, the local criteria, which is our CASP, I-Ready or grades, and the levels for each grade level. The teachers have to complete a form, which is linked here. And they talk about how the student is performing in the class. And then the parents are consulted with by someone from the school or myself or an administrator where we talk about this reclassification process and what's gonna happen after that. We will continue to monitor them and answer any questions. And of course, they're invited to the reclassification ceremony. So this is also in English and Spanish. Whoops, uh-oh. Did I lose it? No, okay. So it shows, that document shows everybody the requirement for reclassification. Now, two years ago, Gabriela Gomez and I were asked to speak at the Calsa Conference for Administrators on our student data talks, which have been implemented in our district. Here's some pictures traveling around to different sites, students of all ages. John Hattie, who is a researcher of academia, did a lot of studies on the power of students thinking about their own thinking and developing their own metacognition so that they can look at where they are in the academic process, their grades, their local assessments, their state assessments, set goals for themselves, realize strengths and weaknesses, and push ahead. This is also shared with parents. So student data talks have been developed for elementary school students where we go into classrooms. Teachers are now trained to do this. They talk to their kids. They look at their components of their report card. They put current grade, goals, comments, same with the LPAC test, same with the local assessment. And then they talk about areas of success and focus areas. We also have this for our secondary students where they look at each class and they understand that success in each class can support them on their road to reclassification. And we analyze, why are you getting a B in math and a C in science? What's going on? What can we do about that? And we actually talk about their thinking and their experience of what they can do. There are scores we look at, and then they also reflect on successes and areas they need to grow. So this thinking about your thinking is is very, very, very powerful. Matter of fact, I was subbing for um Amanda and Shannon last, a couple of weeks ago at Correo, and I walked into Ted Salino's class. He teaches second grade. And I've known Mr. Salino since Paloma years, thirty-seven years ago. He said, Patricia, our second graders are thinking about their thinking. And I said, show me. And he was showing me that the kids were actually analyzing their work and pushing themselves forward. So this, this goes back to how people learn, thinking about your thinking. And parents need to see that kids are thinking about their thinking and what they're doing to move forward. Personally, I think student data talks are great for everybody, not just our emergent bilinguals, but that's just a whole nother push for me. Um, okay. One of the most exciting parts of my job is communicating with parents. I really love interacting with parents. And our, our ELACs and D-LACs have grown. They're fun. I know I've had some of you as guest speakers at our our D-LAC meetings. Um they need to be informative and fun. Last night we had a D-LAC meeting. We filled the room. It went on till late into the evening, so I'm a little tired today, but it was very, very powerful because we looked at our district needs assessment and examined what needs to take place next year, Sylvia. So we looked at all of that. Our D-LAC parents actually run the meeting. They are empowered to, as you see in this slide where we see Raquel Gustavo and Luisa and the agendas behind them. I'm just a piece on the agenda or a guest speaker is a piece on the agenda, but they actually run the meetings. And they're very involved. So my goal is that this continues strongly at all sites. Oh, this is wonderful too. So the San Diego County Office of Ed um honored San Marcos Unified for our work with our bilingual pathways in the biliteracy symposium a couple of weeks ago. The state honors students along their pathway towards biliteracy in kindergarten, fifth grade, and eighth grade. And so I have the fun job of traveling to schools and talking to our bilingual students and getting them amped up. We have a presentation. We talked about the power of being bilingual and how that's their superhero skill. And then kids actually do presentations where they show they're proud of their biliteracy. Santa Lejo Middle School is having them tomorrow. They have thirty-eight kids who are presenting. Um Richlyn is doing it. Parents are calling me. Thank you for doing this. This is so wonderful. Lot of schools are really taking this on, which I'm so happy about. Um and then, of course, this leads kids to understanding the state seal of biliteracy. And here at the bo, the bottom pictures, we have some kids that get to wear the purple cord and be honored for their achievement in more than one language. The bilingual pathways was my own. I realize it's a requirement from our state that is optional for kids, but they really want us to partake in it. But it was my own selfish way to get them to go into high school already knowing about the seal of biliteracy and wanting to push forward with that on their own. So this is a fabulous uh pathway that kids can take. And I also like, Dr. Johnson, how our seal of biliteracy aligns to our portrait of a graduate. It aligns quite nicely, not just in communication, but in their adaptability, empathy, critical thinking, and leadership. So we speak about this as well. Now, the best part of all is the reclassification ceremony. These ceremonies acknowledge all the kids that have been reclassified for that previous year. And we fill stadiums, we fill gymnasiums, we have entertainment, we have the salsa band playing. This year, our ceremony is gonna be very student centered. We're gonna have some fabulous student speakers. Um and it's just a nice event to show kids and their families how important and difficult reclassification can be. But it's, it's just a super fun event. So I know you're all invited. I have a special chair for you up front. Um, May twenty-second, five thirty PM, San Marcos High School. Okay, continuing on. I talked about the systems of initial enrollment all the way up to the reclassification ceremony. But there was something that was missing. It was the instruction, that tier one support that needs to happen in classrooms to support all these kids. Our kids come to us at very different levels. And it's up to a strong quality teacher to understand how to differentiate lessons and support all these kids when maybe they don't communicate in the same language. So every emergent bilingual student should have these in their day. Designated ELD where they get that structured English su, support, integrated ELD where content area teachers know how to differentiate and support these students as well as teaching to the top. You want to take the kids where they are and push them all up. Review, discuss, and support all of our kids with their student data, share that with the parents, and involve the parents in the student's education. I would hope that every parent conference, student data is produced and presented, so parents are a part of this conversation. And this year, I was very, very lucky to have mi compañera, Juli, Juliana Bustos. Hi, Juliana. She's virtual because her pup had surgery today, so she couldn't be here. But she has been a very integral part in supporting the multilingual education program in San Marcos Unified School District. We share an office and she's fabulous. She spent ten years at San Marcos High School, working with students, teachers, and parents. And now she's uh spreading her knowledge. working with students, teachers and parents, and now she's, uh, spreading her knowledge to many of our teachers in our district, talking about instruction for our kids. And we talk about, when we talk about instruction, teaching has really changed. Those of you that taught like I did thirty eight years ago, you used to just take piles and piles home and focus on the assessment. It's so different now. We tell teachers that the time needs to be spent in the preparation because you have kids of so many different levels. So these are just some strategies we talk about that take time before the lesson to make that really impactful lesson, when you have students of all different abilities. In addition, the process of learning is different. We talk to teachers about multiple strategies to engage students in the learning, so they're actively involved, excited about the learning, and really showing their learning, and then they can talk about it, and it's fun as well as rigorous. And then the product that students demonstrate, showing their knowledge of the learning. You have to really plan if you want to do that effectively. Giving fifty question multiple choice, um, questions to kids is not equitable because some kids maybe can't produce that. They have the knowledge, but they need to show it a different way. So student choice is huge. Some students may want to do a presentation, some may want to do a written report, some may want to do a virtual report. We want kids to be able to show their knowledge in multiple ways and develop thinking in multiple ways. So we talk about that. So I've gone through the steps. What we're working on this year, we're continuing with instructional strategies for teachers next year. I want to talk to you about some next steps. Angelica, Varragansu and I are going to talk to you about the dual language program because we're pushing that through to Woodland Park Middle School in a couple of years. We're going to talk to you about that. We want to continue to inform all teachers about integrated ELD so that they can truly understand how to make the content meaningful for all kids. We want to explore systems to better monitor and engage our RFIPs. I spoke to you about that earlier. Even though they're reclassified, they still need that academic structure to perfect their academic understanding of the content and their own speaking, writing, leading, reading, listening, as well as our long-term English learners. We need to focus in on those kids. What's going on? Target what they need to do and get them reclassified. And then I also think it's very important that we incorporate integrated ELD and this document into our new teacher training, so that all new teachers understand, one out of every four of your students are an emergent bilingual, and we need to know how to support them, as well as all the other students in our class. Now, many of you know that I am retiring this year. And don't be sad, don't, 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 be, be happy, because I've had a fabulous career. As you can see, I'm still passionate and energetic about what I do. I haven't slowed down, have I Tiffany? But, you are so lucky, because guess who's coming in to help? So, I actually was on the hiring panel thirty seven years ago when we hired this little lady as a teacher. And we worked together at Paloma, and with her leadership, when she was the principal at Twin Oaks Elementary, and her fabulous leadership at San Marcos Elementary. At D-LAC meetings, her school is highlighted in how they support her families. She's going to do a wonderful, wonderful job. So I feel confident leaving this to her. Now I can sleep at night, I told Tiffany, because I was a little concerned. So as I say goodbye in multiple languages, I also want to thank everybody because thirty eight years, imagine the relationship I've, I've had with students, parents, teachers, colleagues, community members. It's been fabulous. Um, wonderful career, and I would encourage any young person to go in education. It's, there's so many opportunities and doors you can take with this career. And what's really exciting to me is I have two boys who are both out of state, and I don't get to see them very much. Michael's my video gamer living in Vegas, and Chris, on your right, he's graduating from medical school on Wednesday, so I'm flying to Milwaukee to celebrate that. And then his residency is in Santa Barbara, so he's coming home. So I'm very excited about enjoying two very different experiences with each of my boys when I visit them. But I also have a plethora of students in my neighborhood, so I can continue to play school. I have kids over for lunch, and this was me, uh, last Halloween, hanging out with the kids. So I will be just fine. Thank you so much for your attention. Um, I look forward to hearing about your um, approval of the Emergent Bilingual Master Plan, and I am always available for questions. Um, if you'd like to have a conference or come talk to me, but at this time, we're going to transition to the Dual Language Master Plan, which Angelica and I have worked on for many, many months.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Dr. Johnson, SMUSD Governing Board, uh, SMUSD Community. I'm, as Patricia introduced me, Angelica Varragansu, the very proud principal of Twin Oaks Elementary. Um, and just thank you for having us today, sharing our work on the master plan, uh, dual language master plan for SMUSD. Um, the way we've, the primary objective of our master plan is really to be a place where people can go and listen and find out more information about our master plan. Okay, um, and the way we have organized it is it has general information in the actual master plan. There are more specifics, like site specifics, such as schedules and, um, and the way things work day in and day out, is part of the appendices at the very back of the, um, of the master plan. Although, we have only one program in, um, SMUSD. One of the reasons why we did keep it very, like, general for the most part is because we never know what the future may hold. Um, there may be growth of programs, there may be changes, like, we just wanted to make sure that we just kept it open and, um, available for any kind of, uh, growth in our district. So our dual language program is aligned not only with SMUSD's mission statement, but also with our strategic promise and the portrait of our graduate. That promise that we make to every SMUSD, um, specifically that we are committed to providing an unparalleled education experience, um, that prepares every graduate to be future-ready. That is really what the dual language program is all about. The three goals for our program is that bilingual and biliteracy in both languages and two languages, having that academic excellence in all subject areas and that socio-cultural competence for all of our students. The dual language program benefits outcomes and research could, it fills two pages of the master plan because there is just so many. So what we've done here is we've really just narrowed it down into the, um, the benefits and outcomes for our emergent bilinguals, for students who are English dominant, and for all of the dual language students that are in the program. So for emergent bilinguals, that number one program benefit is it really closes that achievement gap. When you look at all of the bilingual education programs that are out there, dual language programs really does support that achievement gap and narrowing it for our, um, emergent bilinguals. There's also that comprehension in their native language, so they're able to connect more with their culture, with their families. And also, it's culturally validating. I know some, when even growing up myself as a, as a language learner, I was like sitting at the corner and the little aide would come and just translate everything to me. And it was almost like a little bit embarrassing or shameful, you know, having to speak another language, having that extra help. But in dual language programs, our emergent bilinguals are really highlighted, and they're really valued for that, their knowledge of their language. For our English dominant student, it's an add, it's an additive bilingual program. I, I don't know what other gift we can give our students than just, you know, giving them a whole other language. For all of the dual language students, they have that intellectual flexibility. So cognitively, like the brain works when they've done that research, they really are using much more of their brain than a monolingual student. There's communication with more cultures, they, they're able to communicate with a lot more people of the world. There is also multiple language resources. They don't only have just a monolingual resource to go to, but if they're doing a report, they can now look for resources, additional, um, support for their, whatever they're working on in other, in more than just one language. And also, the, um, the positive self-concept and career scholars. So there's been studies that have shown that students who are involved and who've gone through a dual language program, they tend to go on to, you know, to further on their education. They go on to higher learning, whether it's college, um, you know, going on to get their masters and more advanced degrees. So we've included, uh, two of the, the prominent dual language models in the program again. If this is a general, um, master plan, and we don't, we don't know what the future may hold. There, we may have another dual language program pop up in our district in a couple of years that may have a different model. We really just want to have that flexibility and showing. So if you're not familiar with the fifty fifty model or the ninety ten, um, fifty fifty is the first, um, the first is the percentage where they start in one language, and then the other percentage is where they have the, the, the other language. In the ninety ten model, ninety percent is like their, the target language, and then the ten is the English language. And then it just progresses, um, into a fifty fifty until they get up to like fifth grade. Um, the, we use the same curriculum, and dual language program uses the same curriculum, um, and instruction for our English and our Spanish classrooms. Uh, for example, we use the Benchmark Advance Curriculum in our English, uh, Language Arts, Reading and Writing uh, curriculum, and in Spanish, we use, you know, Benchmark adelante. Uh, for math, it's Ready Math or Ready Matematicas. Um, at Twin Oaks Elementary right now, the only dual language program in SMUSD, we do follow a fifty fifty model. And the way it is organized, it's organized in an A week, B week. So during A week, students will start in one language and then transition to their second language for the, for the remainder of the day in the afternoon. And then during B week, they flip-flop. So they'll start in that first lang, in the second language from A week. And then they'll transition into their first language from A week, um, in the afternoons. For, um, our assessments, we have English assessments and Spanish assessments. So the I Ready Reading Diagnostic is done, um, several times a year, and this is an only, an English-only, um, assessment. There is no Spanish equivalent, but this year we have started, um, the I Station, which also has like something that's similar to that diagnostic assessment that we do in I Ready. We also have the Benchmark Assessments, um, that are both in English and in Spanish, since it is linked to the curriculum. There is unit end, and then like also like comprehension checks throughout the unit. These are done, if one, if one unit test is done in one language, they won't give the same exact test in the other language. They, the teachers, there's a big, strong collaboration amongst the teachers where they'll pick and choose what they'll assess in English and what they'll assess in Spanish, based on what they taught. There's also local assessments or common assessments at the site that are done in both languages, and these are done as, um, by semester or as needed. We also do the Fuentes and Pinal in both languages, which is their reading, um, their reading levels. Um, that's also done semesterly or as needed. And then at the end of the year, as summative, we give the CASP, which is annually, and it's for, it's done in English for our third through fifth graders. And then our emergent bilinguals take the LPAC annually. And then also, all of our students receive their semester standard-based report cards, just like every other student in SMUSD. So support and resources. As dual language programs have risen, we're not only in California, but in all of the US because there is such a big push for multilingualism. Um, there's been more and more support given to schools and just available for schools to, um, refer to if they need that additional support. We, um, we've, um, had support and asked for support from the San Diego County Office of Education, who are always willing to support us in whatever we may need. There's, um, we are able to attend, uh, two conferences annually with a pretty big group of, um, of staff of teachers. It's the Association of Two-Way, um, Dual Language Education, which we'll be attending at the end of June. And then there's the CAVE, which is the California Association of Bilingual Education, Education, which we just, um, we just went to. There's also the Center for Applied Linguistics, which are really the experts in the area. And we have actually just contracted them to come in and do an evaluation based on student, staff, community forums, based on the seven, on the principles of dual language um, education, and to really look at our program to see if we're headed in the right direction, if we need to do some adjustments, if we need to do some refinements, but really just having that expert come in with a different lens. I may have a, you know, a lens looking at this, at the program this year. Staff has been there for a while. They have a different lens, so it's really just important to have another, a set of eyes, someone who's professional in the area, experts in the area, and really just give some well-thought-out and knowledgeable recommendations for our program and our school. So as we all know, um, family involvement, family, parent, guardian involvement is pivotal for all of our students, whether it's in any kind of program. Dual language education takes an additional step in that commitment, because they're committing for their students to be learning, and they're going to be supporting their students, learning, um, and even maybe struggling, learning in two languages. And we offer, um, a plethora of opportunities for parents to come, become involved, um, attend ours, come to our site, um, to really support not only our site, but our kids, our students. Um, we have, like, they can volunteer in the classroom, volunteer at our school, in our PTO. Um, we have, uh, like, site and district events. We have been trying, um, to bring up more of like our Spanish-speaking events. We had our Dia de Niño, so really just celebrating not only the Spanish language, but celebrating what they, what they celebrate in Spanish-speaking countries. We also have site and district committees, such as our, um, school site council. We have a task force. It's just really providing multiple opportunities and avenues for parents to come in and support our, our site and the dual language program. And it's happy, because I've only been there this year, but in just hearing like our staff and even our parents saying, oh my gosh, it was such a great turnout this year. Oh, we had like so many more parents from last year. Like, we just want to just keep hearing that, just keep hearing more and more, um, attendance from our families, because it really just gives, gives them that pride and the kids that pride, when their families are able to come to some of our, our site events.
Speaking of committees, I spoke at one of the TOES ELAC meetings, and the room was filled, and there were even some English, parents of English-speaking kids who attended because they wanted to learn what was going on in addition to PTO, but they wanted to attend the ELAC meeting. So, um, parents are understanding about this dual language support that we give our, our students. And so Angelica and I, uh, researched neighboring districts and collaborated with other administrators who support dual language programs as they continue from the early little guys up to middle school. And so I know that this work is going to continue. The students at Twin Oaks Elementary are currently um, up to fourth grade with their dual language. Next year, they'll be in fifth grade, and the following year, the program will blend into Woodland Park Middle School, so we're communicating with Katie Buffum. But here's the plan that we have for the middle school pathway. Our sixth, seventh and eighth grade students will take a social studies course in Spanish. They'll have language arts, math, science and PE and English. And then they will have the option of taking a Spanish language arts class or choose an elective of their choice. We want to give kids choices, so they feel empowered to pursue their pathway.
PK, sorry, um, uh, so, I, my understanding is that they only, they only have one elective, right? So, so they're, okay, so, okay. Because you know where I'm going with it, right? Okay, okay. All right, just making sure.
It's all about giving middle school students choice. Okay. Um, and then, when our middle school students continue through the middle school dual language program and they enter high school, a successful K eight dual language program once again gives pathway options. They can pursue AP language courses. They might try for a third language to become trilingual with French, ASL. They can take college courses and internships and establish dual enrollment. And since we now have the interpretation translation course, they can, uh, enter that program and actually start getting paid for their bilingualism. I spoke about in my presentation earlier about bilingual pathways for our elementary and middle school students. Each year, our numbers are increasing as we communicate to students, parents, teachers about this. Um, we want to celebrate our kids, all kids in our district who travel through their bilingual pathway journey. Some of our kids come to us being bilingual, so we want to highlight and honor that. We want to inform our students and parents about the culminating state seal of biliteracy, so that when they enter ninth grade, they know the strict requirements they need to accomplish to earn that seal in twelfth grade. And then we want to track the recipients of these awards, so that California views our enthusiasm about bilingualism, because they take note of the pathway recipients and our seal recipients. Now currently, in the state of California, there are three seals that students can earn. There's the Golden State Seal of Merit for Good Grades and Test Scores in Multiple Content Areas. There's the State Seal of Civic Engagement, which recognizes students who demonstrate excellence in civic engagement, specifically civic education. There's the State Seal of Civic Engagement, which recognizes students who demonstrate excellence in civic engagement, specifically civic education and participation in government. And the State Seal of Biliteracy, which honors students who have a mastery in additional languages besides English. They have to show mastery in two languages. Soon we're going to have a STEM seal that's coming soon, but we don't have it yet. But our goal is that our students who start the dual language program at TOES. Travel through the middle school are prepared in high school to earn that seal, as well as students around the district who come to us with bilingualism. Or speaking fluently in another language. Right now I know Juliana Bustos and our high school counselors are really lurking at different ways. We can honor students that come to us with different languages, so that can be part of their seal earning. And then the most wonderful glory of all of this is when the student gets that cord and they earn that gold seal on their diploma. I want to highlight John Paul Nava, who's also in our audience because he's been, um, an integral part in supporting the TOES dual language program. And he was also honored a couple of weeks ago at the San Diego County, uh, it's be, be lit, by literacy symposium. And I also have to give a shout out to Martha Richardson. She was my first assistant principal at SME many, many, many years ago, and she's here too. So, um, thank you so much for your attention. We are thrilled to do this work for our students and Sylvia is thrilled to continue it.
And I just had some egg more acknowledgements.
And they did a lot better and they're excited to go to that class. And I also really liked the emphasis on like celebrating, um, emergent bilingual, but that was really cool.
It's so nice to hear students understand the importance. It's, it's vital that our kids connect with the content and strong teachers do that.
I'll, I'll close it. And I just, first of all, um, Patricia, I just want to thank you for your 30 years of service.
Thirty-eight.
I'm sorry, I was going to say 40. But yeah, nearly 40 years. I rounded, I, I shouldn't, yeah. Your passion, commitment, enthusiasm to SMUSD will be missed, greatly missed. Thank you for being one of my critical friends as a new board member. You're four, um, you are always answering all of my questions because Dr. Johnson knows I always have a lot of questions. So you always build it them first for me. So thank you. You saved Dr. Johnson a lot of time. And, um, I really appreciate the leadership that you have provided, um, to our emergent bilinguals, but also the leadership that you've helped provide with continuity with our dual language program, which is very unique. A lot of people don't realize that we do have quite a few dual language programs in our country, but it's very unusual to have a school-wide program. Um, usually charter schools have these programs that were one of the few public schools that have a K five with a pathway to middle school and high school. So thank you, um, for, for taking on that leadership. Anhelica, um, we're so happy to have you here. I know the parents are thrilled and the staff, um, so you know, just know we're here to support you. Super excited to have Cal join us to do kind of a, a, a highlight and, and look at what's working and, and how we can continuously improve our dual language program. Dr. Johnson, he, he's, you know, has extensive experience as a dual language principal overseeing dual language programs. Um, you know, I teach in a SESU and, and dual language English learning department. But pal is the gold standard. So, you know, it's having that outside organization come in and look at what we're doing from, uh, you know, at all levels and, and meeting with all stakeholders, staff, parents, students, teachers, just really getting, you know, a pulse and also just really uncovering every rock. So thank you for bringing them in. Um, I'm super excited as a board member, Martin shared to just see how this document and the work that you're doing continues to evolve and get better. And, um, just know that many of us are English learners here on the board. And we value biculturalism, multiculturalism and, and language being language, you know, the, the joys and successes and the challenges of, of, of being a language learner. And so, um, thank you for your leadership. I'm super excited that Sylvia will be taking over for the helm. And, um, I just, I'm super excited for you and just know that you have our support and, um, thank you, Dr. Campbell, for the leadership that you have provided overseeing our emergent bilinguals and our dual language program and all the services that go along with that. It's, it's a lot. It's very comprehensive. So, um, you did a, an amazing presentation tonight and, um, thank you so much. We, we appreciate both of you. Eight point O reports by board members. Does anyone have anything that they would like to report or share? I'll be brief. I got to attend, uh, Whole New World? No, that was Little Mermaid last month.
Beauty and the Beast.
Beauty and the Beast.
Broadway level.
Oh, it was really, I felt like I was in New York Broadway. It was fantastic at Santa La Hill Middle School. And, uh, I got to see our Latin jazz band at the, um, dual language, uh, by literacy symposium at the Prado. And I had so many compliments from my colleagues and board members from South County. One board member's husband, he's Puerto Rican. He said, they took me back home to Puerto Rico. And they were serenading everyone from like the balcony. And it was just, it was a beautiful moment. I, I tried to be humble, but I was so proud of them. I was so proud. So, um, it's, it was nice to be from San Marcos and get those, that appreciation. Um, and it was exciting to be there to acknowledge, um, Senor Nava, who was acknowledged at the county level for his leadership, um, at our dollar, dual emergent school and just his leadership in our district with working with our emergent bilinguals. So thank you. It was special to be there with all of you from San Marcos, representing and celebrating, um, our dual language and, and biliterary, biliterate leaders in the county. So. All right. Nine point O action agenda. Do I have a motion? To, nine point one? Do I have a motion to? All right, put it on. Certificate and classified personnel changes, including hiring, resignation, leaves of absence, promotions, retirements and reassignments. Dr. Garcia?
Good evening, board members. As part of tonight's personnel agenda, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Ms. Christine Greiley and recommend her promotion to the position of San Marcos Elementary School Principal. With the upcoming transition of SME's current principal Sylvia Ventura Jacobson to a director of multicultural and multilingual education. Ms. Greiley's recommendation, recommended promotion to school principal ensures consistency and a seamless transition in their administrative team. Christine has been an educator for the last 19 years, all of them at SME, which I find remarkable. She brings a wealth of experience and a proven track record fostering equitable learning environments that drive student achievement. She's also experienced in leading, uh, schools serving emergent bilingual populations and has a deep understanding of the diverse needs of the school community. As assistant principal at San Marcos Elementary School, Christine has co-led the community school initiative, managing substantial budgets and developing effective academic and enrichment programs for the diverse student body. And some with Christine at the helm, we know that San Marcos Elementary School students and staff will continue to be in good hands and thrive. And I also, uh, want to acknowledge tonight, uh, Christine is proudly joined, uh, by her loved ones, by her family and members of the San Marcos Elementary School staff. So I want to thank them for, for being here this evening.
Thank you very much. Good evening, governing board, members of cabinet and Dr. Johnson. San Marcos Elementary School is an exceptionally special place. Here, students, families and community gather beautifully to create a rich culture with strong social and family connections. Visitors feel a distinct spirit of warmth and love immediately. Assisting in Sylvia Ventura Jacobson's remarkable work for the last three years has been an honor. Truly the professional partnership of a lifetime for me. I'm grateful for her mentorship and guidance. Serving in the San Marcos Elementary School community for the last 19 years has been such a great privilege. And I am so eager to start my 20th school year at SME as the principal. The heartbeat of SME is our hardworking classified staff. Their support in classrooms and the broader school community is an essential component of our community school. The phenomenal group of educators that comprise our highly trained, certificated staff demonstrate tireless dedication that is unmatched. Our team currently assembled at SME are poised for success and prepared to make our students future ready. The legacy of leadership at San Marcos Elementary underscores the significance of my new responsibilities. For this, I am incredibly grateful. I have been trusted to continue the forward momentum and good work that we are currently experiencing. And I am so excited about this opportunity. Becoming the principal of San Marcos Elementary School is the honor of my career. And the future holds great things for our students and our community. Thank you so much.
With that, uh, this is an action item to recommend, I'm sorry, with, with a recommendation to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the certificated and classified personnel changes, including hiring, resignations, leave of absence, promotions, retirements and reassignments?
So moved.
A second.
Moved by member Martin, second by member Carlson to approve the personnel action as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to take, um, a break for five minutes. And as we take that break, if we can have Christine's family come up, we're going to take a, a photo here in front. So a five minute break.
Shout out to the RIT Garcia family for making out here. Oh, sorry, Garcia, wait. I was emphasizing the Garcia. I was emphasizing the Garcia.
So thank you. Nine point two resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-three twenty-four, final action to dismiss certificated employees. Dr. Garcia?
Yes, board members, as you're aware, at staff's recommendation, the board approved a certificated layoff resolution on March ninth, twenty twenty-four, authorizing the district to provide preliminary notice to three certificated staff members, informing them that their employment may be discontinued effective at the end of the school year. And this was due to grant funding for their positions running out. With the retirement of one school counselor, we are able to adjust the amount of staff who need to receive final layoff notices from three to two. This recommended resolution authorizes staff to provide final layoff notices to impacted employees. It is important to note that we have been in close contact with these employees, and they understand their current status. I also wanted to share that we continue to work on staffing decisions with the goal of rescinding as many of these layoffs as possible. The outcome can very much still improve between now and the beginning of next school year, and that is very much our goal. With that, this is an action item with the recommendation to approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the certificated and classified? Excuse me, do I have a motion to approve resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-three twenty-four as presented?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by member Ahmad, second by member Martine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine point three, resolution forty dash twenty-three twenty-four. Final action to dismiss classified employees. Dr. Garcia?
Yes, sir. Similar to the previous item, in March, the board authorized a classified resolution authorizing the layoff of three classified positions and the elimination of a vacant position. Again, this was due to grant funding running out at the end of the school year. With some employee attrition, we were able to adjust the number of layoff notices that need to be issued from three to two. Additionally, one of the employees who is receiving a notice has rights to go back to a previously held classification with the district. So to put it in more simple terms, the approval of this resolution will result in the loss of employment for only one staff member at this time. And again, the situation may improve between now and the end of the school year with any additional attrition that may happen. Again, this is an action item with the recommendation to approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number forty dash twenty-three twenty-four as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by member Martine, second by member Ahmad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. For actions items nine point four through nine point nine, the governing board will be acting as the legislative body of community facilities, district number eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District. Agenda item nine point four, public hearing regarding proposed CFD number eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District. This is the time and place designated for the public hearing on the proposed establishment of CFD number eighteen, the proposed rate and method apportionment of special tax within CFD number eighteen, and the incurring bonded indebtedness by CFD number eighteen. I declare the public hearing now open. That was not much of a noise.
Did you say bang?
Some people don't like that sound. I won't say who. Sorry. Will staff please provide a presentation regarding proposed CFD number eighteen?
CFD number eighteen will provide school facility funding as agreed to be provided under the provisions of the school facilities funding agreement by and among San Marcos Unified School District and the property owner approved by the governing board on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Key analytics has prepared and submitted the CFD report for proposed CFD number eighteen, which has been made available to the governing board as part of these proceedings.
Has staff confirmed that all notices, filings, and publications for these proceedings have been completed?
Yes, all publications and notices of filings of these public hearing and proposed CFD number eighteen have been accomplished and are on file at the district office and as shown on the filing list provided to the board members.
Have any written protests been received from any person or party as to these proceedings, the special tax or proposed bonded indebtedness for CFD number eighteen?
No written protests have been received.
Susie, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of CFD number eighteen? If so, please give your name and address and state whether you are an owner of property within the proposed CFD number eighteen or a registered voter within proposed CFD number eighteen. Susie?
There are no speakers.
Susie, is there anyone present who wishes to speak against or protests generally against A, the establishment of CFD number eighteen, B, the extent of CFD number eighteen, C, the types of public facilities to be financed through CFD number eighteen, D, the rate and method of apportionment of special tax proposed for CFD number eighteen, or E, the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in an amount not to exceed five million dollars? If so, please give your name and address, and if applicable, state whether you are an owner of property within proposed CFD number eighteen or a registered voter within proposed CFD number eighteen. Susie?
There are no speakers.
If there are no more comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. The public hearing in regard to CFD number eighteen are now closed. Has staff determined whether there is a majority protest as to the establishment of proposed CFD number eighteen? The furnishing of the specified types of facilities or services within proposed CFD number eighteen? The levy of the special taxes within proposed CFD number eighteen? The necessity to incur bonded indebtedness or other related matters?
No protests have been received as to any pending matters relating to proposed CFD number eighteen. Hence, there is no majority protest.
The next matter on the agenda is item number nine point five, consideration of resolution number forty-one dash twenty-three twenty-four, which reads as follows. Resolution of the governing board of the San Marcos Unified School District determining the validity of prior proceedings establishing community facilities, district number eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District, authorizing the levy of special taxes within community facilities, district number eighteen, establishing an appropriation limit, making certain findings, calling an election, and taking related actions. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number forty-one dash twenty-three twenty-four?
Move to adopt.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by member Carlson, second by member Martine to adopt resolution number forty-one dash twenty-three twenty-four as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. As the adoption of resolution forty-one dash twenty-three twenty-four form CFD number eighteen and address related matters, the next agenda item is item number nine point six. Discussion of resolution number forty-two dash twenty-three twenty-four, which reads as follows. Resolution of the governing board of the San Marcos Unified School District, acting as the legislative body of community facilities, district number eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District, determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness and the amount not to exceed five million dollars within community facilities, district number eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District, calling an election and taking related actions. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number forty-two dash twenty-three twenty-four?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by member Ahmad, second by member Martine to adopt resolution number forty-two dash twenty-three twenty-four as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item nine point seven. Special tax and bonded elections. Conduct and present election results. Pursued to resolution number forty-one twenty-three dash twenty-three twenty-four and number forty-two dash twenty-three twenty-four, the assistant superintendent of business services is the acting election official for the described combined special tax and bond election of community facilities, district number eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District. Erin, have you received the waivers from all of the landowners that are necessary to conduct the combined special tax and bond election of community facilities district number eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District at this time?
We have received a written waiver from each landowner within the boundaries of CFD number eighteen permitting the election to be held at this time, and the waiver was duly completed and signed.
Does the assistant superintendent of business services, Erin Garcia, acting as elected official for CFD number eighteen, concur in the request to hold the election less than one hundred and twenty-five days after adoption of the resolution in formation CFD number eighteen?
Yes.
Has a CFD number eighteen election official received the ballots from the qualified voters within CFD number eighteen? If so, please declare the results of the election.
Members of the board, the special election called for CFD number eighteen on the combined special tax and bond election has been conducted. The result of the election is ten votes in favor and zero votes opposed. The certification of election results will be attached to resolution number forty-three dash twenty-three twenty-four, which is presented for your consideration.
The next matter on the agenda is item nine point eight, consideration of resolution number forty-three dash twenty-three twenty-four, which reads as follows. Resolution of the governing board of the San Marcos Unified School District, acting as the legislative body of community facilities, district number eighteen, canvassing the results of the election held within community facilities, district number eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number forty-one dash twenty-three twenty-four?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by member Ahmad, second by member Carlson to adopt resolution number forty-one dash twenty-three twenty-four as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number nine point nine. Conduct first reading of ordinance number two dash twenty-three twenty-four. Ordinance of the community facilities, district number eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District, authorizing the levy of a special tax within community facilities, district number eighteen. authorizing the levy of a special tax within community facilities district number eighteen. Do I have a motion to present first reading?
I move that the ordinance number two dash twenty three twenty four be presented by reading of the title only, and that the clerk forego the reading of the entire ordinance.
Do I have a second? Move by member Ahmad, second by member Martin, to present ordinance number two dash twenty three twenty four by reading of the title only. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The title of ordinance number zero two dash twenty three twenty four reads as follows. Ordinance of Community Facilities District Number Eighteen of the San Marcos Unified School District, authorizing the levy of a special tax within Community Facility District Number Eighteen. Copies of proposed ordinance number two dash twenty three twenty four are available at the district's business office for public inspection. It is expected that ordinance number two dash twenty three twenty four will be presented for its second reading and considering for adoption, considered for adoption at the next regular meeting of the governing board. The matters related to CFD number eighteen are complete. The governing board will no longer will, will be acting as the legislative body of CFD number eighteen for the remaining items of the governing board agenda. Nine point ten, public hearing to hear comments from the public regarding the financial provisions of the collective bargaining agreement between San Marcos Unified School District and the San Marcos Educators Association regarding seventh period at La Marada Academy. Erin?
On tonight's agenda, the board will consider approval of an MOU with SMEA, and the government code requires school districts to publicly disclose the provisions of any bargaining agreement, agreement, including the costs that may be incurred prior to considering its approval. Tonight, we estimate that the MOU regarding holding a seventh period for middle school at La Marada Academy will cost approximately thirty-four thousand dollars and impacts the twenty-four twenty-five budget only because this is MOU is in effect for just one school year.
This public hearing is now open. Susie, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
There are no speakers.
This public hearing is now closed. Nine point eleven, disclosures of collective bargaining agreement of the San Marcos Unified School District and the San Marcos Educators Association regarding seventh period at La Marada Academy. Erin?
To comply with the government code, documents have been prepared that disclose the costs of the MOU being considered tonight. As required, the superintendent and I have certified that we can afford the costs of this agreement, and the disclosures were provided to the San Diego County Office of Education in advance for their review.
Do I have a motion to approve the disclosures of collective bargaining agreements with SMEA as presented?
I'll second.
Move by member Ahmad, second by member Martin. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine point twelve, memorandum of understanding with the San Marcos Educators Association, La Marada Academy period, seven period day. Dr. Garcia?
Yes, board members, with teacher preparation time language included in our collective bargaining agreement, and with interest from La Marada Academy to have a seven-period bell schedule, we needed to carve out additional teacher preparation time. La Marada administration and staff provided input and are pleased with this agreement. In collaboration with SMEA, we were intentional to provide two preparation days before the school year started and two days during the school year. This is an action item with a recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with SMEA as presented?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Move by member Carlson, second by member Ahmad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine point thirteen, public hearing to receive comments on the school facilities fee justification report and to consider and respond to all comments received by the district related thereto. Erin?
Tonight, the board will consider adopting a resolution to increase the level-one statutory school fees, commonly referred to as developer fees, based on a justification study that was recently completed. Prior to adopting an increase in fees, the government code requires the board to conduct a public hearing. The district has provided proper notice of this public hearing and made the justification study available to the public ten days in advance of this meeting as required.
This public hearing is now open. Susie, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
There are no speakers.
This public hearing is now closed. Nine point fourteen, resolution number forty four dash twenty three twenty four. Resolution of the governing board of the San Marcos Unified Schools District, improving an increase in the statutory school fees imposed on new residential and commercial industrial construction pursuant to education code section seventeen six two zero and government code six five nine nine five. Erin?
Adoption of this resolution will allow the district to increase the statutory level-one school fees that are being charged for new residential and commercial developments located within the school district. Prior to taking action to increase the school fees, the district has had to complete a fee justification study, which was completed by our consultant, Key Analytics. The study must demonstrate a nexus between the fee being charged and the need for school facilities and the projected costs of these facilities. Based on the projected facility cost impacts to the district, the study determined that the district is justified and may levy the maximum level-one statutory school fees. The state allocation board sets the maximum level-one fees that are allowed to be charged, and this was recently increased in January. The new maximum fee a unified school district may charge for residential development is five dollars and seventeen cents a square foot, and commercial industrial construction, it may be charged eighty-four cents a square foot. The level-one fee would be applied to any new residential or commercial development that is located outside of one of our established CFDs. As a reminder, properties within any of our CFDs pay, pay a special tax levy in lieu of paying level-one developer fees. If the resolution is adopted tonight, the new fees will become effective in sixty days.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number forty four dash twenty three twenty four as presented?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Move by member Ahmad, second by member Carlson. Student board representatives, please say your vote.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine point fifteen, appointment of representatives to the San Diego County Educational Facilities Authority number two. Erin?
The facilities authority number two is the governing board for the operation of this facility, the NECREC, and includes membership of both San Marcos Unified School District and the San Diego County Office of Education. The action tonight will appoint a SMUSD board member to serve as director, an alternate director for the next two years. So we're asking tonight for someone that will serve from July one, twenty twenty four, through June, twenty twenty six. The facilities authority board typically just meets once a year in late May. The current board representatives are Jamie as the director and Andres as the alternate director, and Jamie is already scheduled to attend this year's meeting in May, so we're just asking for a director and alternate director for the next two school years.
I'll suggest that we keep the, the both Jamie and myself as the representative.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and we're gonna take the motions one, and we'll take them separately, or one for the director and one for the alternate, so.
Do I have a motion to appoint member Chamberlain as director to the San Diego Educational Facilities Authority, number two?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Move by member Martin, second by member Carlson, to appoint member Chamberlain as the director. Student board representatives, please say your vote.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint member Martin?
I'll move to approve.
As an alternative to the San Diego Educational Facilities Authority number two?
I'll move to approve that.
I'll second.
Move by member Ahmad, second by member Carlson, to appoint member Martin as the alternate. Student board represent, representatives, please say your vote.
Aye. Aye.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine point sixteen, new job description, child nutrition services manager, registered dietitian. Dr. Garcia?
Yes, board members, this item comes with a revised job description. The board should have hard copies of the revisions that were made in front of you, and the revised copy was also posted online to our online agenda. The revisions include a removal of item number fourteen and fifteen in the job responsibility section, and that's to further clarify that the intention not to take any classified bargaining work with this management position. Excuse me, in terms of the need for this position, they are as follows. With universal meals, our child nutrition services department has seen an increase in special diets, and a registered dietitian has specialized training to handle food allergies, meal accommodations, and recipe menu adjustments. Also, last week, the U.S. Department of Agriculture published final rules for school meals, which included sugar limits and sodium limits. And so in order to make those adjustments, that's, this position will be, will be helping with that. As you heard a few months ago from our director of Child Nutrition Services, CNS is continuing to increase scratch-made meals and creating those, those meals in-house. And so the registered dietitian would provide support in that area, and I know a goal for the department as well is to include more student voice and get more student input and further recipe development. This position is funded by Cafeteria Fund, which can only be spent within the student nutrition program, meaning there's not going to be general fund dollars to support this position. And so finally, with that, this is an action item with a recommendation to approve the revised job description as presented.
I know you've mentioned, Dr. Garcia, that we have a lot of students with restricted meals, and we have this need to have just monitoring of, of meals and how meals are prepared. If we were a restaurant, we would be the largest restaurant in all of San Marcos. So I just want to say thank you for, you know, creating this additional position and job description for this, this need that we have within our organization. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have the motion to approve the revised description? Child nutrition services manager, registered dietitian, as presented?
So moved. I second.
Move by member Carlson, second by member Ahmad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ten point O, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for discussion purposes?
Move to approve. And I'll second.
Move by member Carlson, second by member Ahmad, to approve the consent agenda for discussion purposes. Is there any discussion? Move by member Carlson, second by member Ahmad. Student board representatives, please say your vote.
Aye.
Board members in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Eleven point O, information agenda. Eleven point one. Quarterly report of financial disclosures, disclosures for the period ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty four. Erin?
The government code, code requires school districts to disclose its investments quarterly to the governing board. To tonight's report is for the quarter ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty four, when we had a total funds of two hundred and seventeen million dollars invested in various accounts. Six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars was invested in various FDIC insured bank accounts. We also had twelve point seven million invested in accounts related to our various CFD accounts to be used for facility and construction purposes only. The majority of our funds on deposit, over two hundred and four million, were invested with the San Diego County Treasurers Schools Investment Pool as required. The investment pool earned an annualized interest rate of three point eight six percent for the third quarter, and this report also includes a statement from the San Diego County Treasurer that they have a sufficient funds in the investment pool to meet the needs, obligation needs for at least the next six months.
Thank you. Eleven point two, revisions to existing governing board policy. Zero four six zero, local control and accountability plan. Board policy thirteen twelve point two, complaints concerning instructional materials. Board policy thirteen twelve point three, uniform complaint procedures. Board policy fifty one forty five point three, non-discrimination harassment. Board policy six one one five, ceremonies and observances. Board policy sixty one sixty one point one, selection and evaluation of instructional materials. Board policy sixty one sixty one point eleven, supplementary instructional materials, and board policy sixty one sixty three point one, library media centers. Dr. Campbell?
There are several updated policies that the Ed Services Division is presenting to the board this evening. All updates are based on new state laws that have gone into effect. BP zero four six zero, local control and accountability plan has been updated to reflect new law SB one one four, which requires numerous changes to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five LCAP. It adds a requirement of the adoption of the annual update honor before July first of each year and clarifies the groups that should be consulted in the development of both the LCAP and the annual update. BP six one one five, ceremonies and observances has been updated to add events of present-day significance to the list of recognitions. This coincides with the state's adoption of Workplace Readiness Week in Ed Code forty-nine one one zero point five. The remaining policy updates are all related to AB one zero seven eight, which clarifies the role of the governing board in the selection and adoption of core and supplement, supplementary instructional materials, as well as the selection of library materials. The new statute in short states that a school district or county board of education shall not refuse to approve the use or prohibit the use of instructional or supplemental materials, including library materials, on the basis that it includes a study of role and contributions of any individual or group within a protected class, or on the basis that it contains inclusive and or diverse perspectives. To comply with the new law, we are recommending updates to policies thirteen twelve point two and thirteen twelve point three, uniform complaint procedures and complaints concerning instructional materials. Policy fifty one forty five point three, non-discrimination harassment. Policies sixty one sixty one point one and sixty one sixty one point eleven, selection and evaluation of instructional materials and supplementary instructional materials, and lastly, sixty one sixty three point one, library media centers. These updates will be brought back to the board next month for your review and final approval.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for your updates on revision to existing governing board policies. Twelve point O, closing items. Twelve point one, orgis, or organizational matters. The next regular board meeting will take place on Thursday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P.M. in the Media Center of the North County Regional Education Center, two five five. two-five-five Pico Avenue, San Marcos, California, nine-two-zero-six-nine. Twelve point two, adjournment. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.